Okay. All right, so, thank you all. Here we are. And again, so I apologize, it's been a bit crazy month, so I didn't remember some of the things I was supposed to do, like send an agenda out days ago. But it's no surprise, it's just picking up everything we were doing last time. So hopefully that's not an issue. So we'll just, and I don't see anybody, I mean, Tim, you didn't want to privilege the floor, or did you? Okay, so there's no privilege of the floor. Adam, would you mind taking some notes, just again, if we make any decisions, but like last time, it's just, you know, anything that's a concrete step to help so that I don't screw up when I write up the minutes, you know? And so, which brings us to the minutes from last time. And this is a general question, you know? So it's the typical thing, of course, is, you know, you have the minutes to go out at the next meeting, you approve them. That's the official Roberts Rules of Order thing. On the other hand, if that means it's at least a month lag before the public can see what we were doing, unless they wanted to see the replay. So what do folks think I should do? Should we put like a draft as soon as I have one ready? And then we approve it at the final meeting? Is, you know, is that okay? Or should we just not have anything on the web until we finally approve them? So that's the question I have right now.
Post the draft.
Okay, Will, what were you gonna say?
I would post the draft.
And then Michelle and Tim, is there a town policy?
I don't know. Maybe, maybe Tim does.
Approved by email, okay. And then may make corrections.
I couldn't really hear what Tim said.
Tim's suggestion was to go ahead and post a draft and actually do the approval by email, which, you know, I'm finding their way, I mean, you know, typically I'm gonna mail them out, and if there's any problems, I'll fix them. But I'm okay either way, or doing an official approval at a meeting. But I do know that when I was trying to track town board work on, you know, the way they were messing up the zoning plan, it was really critical to, you know, he's like, well, what happened last night at the meeting? And it's nice when the minutes go up quickly, which Jesse always did. That was nice.
I'm fine with posting the draft minutes, you know, as soon after the meeting as possible, as long as it's labeled draft minutes. But I guess I would suggest, just for kind of clarity and process, that we wait to approve the minutes until a formal meeting, so that no one can contest that oh, you guys did something about email that you shouldn't have done.
Any objection to that, Will or Adam?
Nope.
Alright, so that would be weird. So in which case, I did send out a draft of the minutes. Are there any corrections? Or changes to those minutes? I do have copies here. That was now, you know, about three or four weeks ago. So I don't know, I'm assuming, I hope people actually read them at the time.
Yeah, and I'll just comment that I like the idea of italicized notes, if there's a, you know, particular item to follow up on that was followed up before we actually get to approving the minutes or even meeting minutes. So I like that format or style for this kind of board. And with that said, I'll move approval.
Okay. And we can do a move in a second if someone wants to. Do I have it here a second for approving the minutes?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye? All right. So Roberts and his rules would be happy. Okay. So then moving on to business. So I had put out at last meeting the list of sort of topics that had bubbled up during the comprehensive plan work and the zoning commission work and everything else, and presented that to you all last time. And I have now deleted the specific mention of trying to come up with some sort of natural grassland preserve, thinking that was not necessarily the town, you know, didn't authorize level of a town action. So given that, are there any other changes, additions, deletions, or anything to that list? I do have copies for those here if you guys want to look at that again. And so indeed, the intent is that this was not going to go for the town board to feed into their thinking as they give us a direction for the next whatever number of months of what we do.
And Bill, did you forward the amended list to me?
The only thing, the only change was I deleted the last, or one of the items under other long-term issues. So it's the same list, other than the deletion of the grassland preserve. So I did not send you that, because I only deleted that this afternoon. No one got it.
And I had forwarded that list to Mark.
Okay, well, you guys are all gonna formally get it now.
Okay.
And I guess there's a comment under long-term, other long-term issues, and for, you know, maybe the town board would come on this anyway to us, but I attended the kind of public session of the ag committee last week, I guess. And it appears that they're on a timeline that they will have their report with recommendations and objectives and outcomes and stuff finalized about October. So, you know, we might want to put that formally on our November agenda to review that and see if we see anything in the ag committee report that's pertinent to what the planning board does.
Okay, yeah, I agree, all with that to the town board. But yeah, we had good, good heads up. I didn't know what their timetable was, so I appreciate that. And I've made a note. Okay, so if I'm not hearing any other changes or objections, I'm gonna just then mail this to the town board. And then they can use it to start the next fire, or they can use it to feed their thinking as they wish. Okay, so then we come to basically considering the subdivision review revisions. And of that, there were a few items that were from last time, action items, the things to look into. And one of those, Barb, you can remind us, I think it had to do with what hearing was optional, and you sent us a note about that.
Yeah, if there's a, if there's a draft environmental impact statement, a public hearing associated with the DEIS is optional. A public hearing is always required if there's a subdivision being proposed or being reviewed by the review board.
Okay, so the optional part had to do with the Okay, all right. And then I, you know, so, because, okay, because again, one of our, one of the core issues is if you're having a minor subdivision, which turns out maybe to just be someone selling off five acres from their hundred acre parcel, the way things are set up in town law and our local laws, that requires a public hearing and all kinds of stuff. And the question is, is there a way to make that part of our subdividing process easier? But we can't necessarily waive the public hearing. However, as we'll hear, I think, from Michelle, surely I know the town board is thinking about that. So we'll get that update in a second. But I want to report on what I learned from some of the other towns in the area. Because to me, again, one of the core issues is, you know, I fully get it, you're building four or five houses, you know, lots, a minor subdivision, you should have some kind of review. But if you just want to sell off five or 10 acres, it seems like the rigmarole of doing an EAF and then having, you know, a seeker full thing, and then going through a public hearing, it just seemed a bit cumbersome. And I was trying to figure out a way to make that, particularly as we're going, you know, given where the town has been in the big fight we've been through, people, as I say, like a lot of that kind of fight. So I was like, I'll just silence this thing. So I was trying to, how did other towns treat that issue? And so here's what I have found, and I have information from, I'm gonna just turn this off. So I, in the end, now I've looked at Broughton, Dryden, Danby, and Galvin and Enfield sideways, as it turns out. And all of them do something a little bit different. But of those, three of the four have come up with some procedure that makes it simpler to do a simple land division. So Broughton, for example, has a major and minor subdivision, you know, again, majors like five and above, minors below that. But if it's simply a one division, if you just take one parcel dividing into two pieces, that is handled administratively by their code officer. There are some other requirements. For example, it has to not make a lot non-conforming. It has to not make a building that's on there suddenly non-conforming, because maybe you don't have setback, you need to have that kind of thing. Dan, Dryden is set up on paper very similar to what is in our revised law. Major, five and above. Anything, any division two to five is a minor subdivision and is reviewed. At least on papers, what it looked like to me. But when I talked to the town planner, the reality is somewhat different, because I was asking, you know, dude, in the end, do you waive a lot of the requirements, like the public hearing? He said, well, actually, I approve all of the minor subdivisions. It doesn't go to their planning board. Which I think probably means they may be challengeable, because he says, yes, I'm doing seeker, which we know he's not allowed to do. Okay, so that may not be the best model for us, but it is an occasion, I think they found, you know, their way of handling it is that, again, something is, and he said, in practice, he never, I'm gonna say formally weighs requirements, but if someone gives him a site plan and it doesn't have five-foot elevation contours, which is what it says in the regulations, but he knows the property is fairly flat, and he's fine with that. If it's got a lot of, you know, like a big gorge on it, then maybe he'll say, hey, can you get me that? So I think in effect, he waves requirements as necessary to streamline the process.
So Bill, clarification there, but the planner is not the code officer, right?
It was the head of the planning department. So I don't know how the rest of the functions there are handled, but it is still an administrative office. It's not a legislative body. Who are the ones who have to do things like seeker? So that's, that's all I know. He's the head of the planning department. Yeah, I meant, I don't know, sorry. Danby, I just, is a little bit, so they are actually almost exactly like the proposed Caroline revision. Though their minor and major is different, and the planner there said, yeah, their subdivision law is kind of garbled and has issues to be resolved. But he said that, yes, dividing land at all goes to their planning board. And he said, in his opinion, yeah, in, you know, simple cases, that was cumbersome, I think is the word he used. More cumbersome than, than he thought was, was good. But then he's a planner, he'd love to do it himself, so anyway. And he happens to live in Enfield, and so he told me that Enfields is like Broughton, that if you're just dividing, you know, one division, making two pieces of land, that's handled administratively. If you're doing anything more than that, that goes to their planning board. So that's a snapshot of how other towns around here have sort of tried to handle this, you know, how much review, what gets. Yeah, so I don't, I don't have a lot of data, and again, I just, I did push the guy in Danby a little bit, because that's the one place where I was like, yeah, that maybe are people complaining about it a lot? He said, you know, most of their complaints are because they recently went through a revision where they really made very large minimum lot sizes in much of their rural areas. That's where they're getting complaints. Well, yeah, they have a, like, ultra-rural, which is 25 acres, probably their ag area. They have a rural, which is 10 acres. And then down from that and other, other zones. So Yes. Though, he told me, they have a cluster subdivision provision, which effectively is like our average lot size, where you can, you know, if you had a 20-acre lot, you could make two lots out of it of any size. But that's it. It's like our developing unit thing, that, so, so in effect, they do have one provision for that if someone wants to, but they do specify a 10-acre minimum lot size, but there's a way to skirt that. Nan, when you read through her answers to our questions, was, was, you know, quite insistent that really anything should be reviewed, and that that was appropriate because of the seeker process that was required for land subdivision. Guy, when you get into his stuff, is a little more nuanced, and what he said is that it depends how the town set things up. But, and also it depended on whether the division of land required seeker. Not all land division requires seeker. If the town says, oh yeah, you can do two without seeker. But there are certain things that would trigger that, like if in the land division process, a road was being built that the town had, was, was being dedicated to the town. Or maybe you're right next to a historic monument. There are things that will trigger seeker even for a very simple operation. And so his recommendation is, if you want to exempt something, and I'll pull it out, then one of the requirements of being exempt is that it not require seeker, for whatever reason. And so I was pulling up, and Michelle, you did get a copy of my summary of guys' answers. She helped share those, and I sent one to Mark, too. So, yes, so.
So when you're ready for comments?
Yes, I think we're very close to that. Yeah, he said that, right, environmental review can only be done by an agency, but whether a subdivision required seeker would depend on the town's regulations and on one of these other factors that he'd mentioned previously, like whether you're a historic area or something like that. So, and also that no infrastructure that need to be reviewed or accepted by the town, such as a new road or stormwater facilities. So he said, in that case, it couldn't be done by CEO, but if those things weren't true, it could be. He also made a point, and it's a good one, that saying something doesn't need review is not really the right language. Someone should always look it over to make sure, for example, the person isn't lying. It's a question of whether it needs approval by our review board, is what we're exempting things from. Okay, so yeah, I'm done with my spiel, and what do you want to say, Will, or anybody else?
Well, for one thing, I went out and looked at the type-two list.
Right.
The New York State site, and it's pretty broad. And so that made it confusing to me. That Nan's starting point was that all lots need to be buildable. I'm not sure exactly where she's, how she meant that, or what that initial statement was based on, but she kept repeating it. But things like you're building a house is type-two. So what I got from that is that there's, there's no concern built into seeker that someone building a house on a property is going to have significant negative impacts. So I wanted to, to really understand what types of significant environmental impacts are we really concerned with, because the other aspect of what all the literature I could find time to read were pointing to were not setting up a municipality to be forced to spend a lot of money providing utility-type services or roads that they're obligated to provide. And that area, I'm not as familiar with in New York as in Massachusetts, but I can tell you that we had land there where the town made it clear that if we chose to build on it, they were obligated to build a paved road to our property. And I'm, you know, you don't need details more than that. But I'm just saying there are places where once someone builds a house, you have that some level of obligation. So, you know, I can understand concern there. As far as the other utilities, the town doesn't have an obligation for electric utilities, and we pretty much covered septic and water provision through the health department. So you know, are, are we concerned about future sewer systems? Because I think we're a long way from that outside of the hamlets. So my questions are, you know, what exactly are the significant environmental impacts we're most concerned about? And is there some concern for, like, future sewer systems?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I can answer those. I mean, I think in terms of the type-two action, yeah, building a single house is a type-two action. But if you look at the type-one actions, if a town doesn't have zoning or a site plan law, anything building 10 houses is a, is a, is a type-one action. So the state understands that building more of something has more impact than building one of something. And so I think that basically, you know, so, and if you have zoning, then the threshold is higher. And if you have sewer, the threshold is even higher for how many things are built. So I think that the way the state looks at it is, we understand that one of these is not a big deal, but when you get a bunch of them, I think that's sort of where the town is probably also looking at, then, is you know, that's why a minor or major subdivision maybe ought to be reviewed, is, and indeed, a single house being built doesn't get any kind of review in the town. But that again, if you're suddenly having five or six or 10 houses built in quick succession, right, water sewer is directly part of the Tompkins County Review, but I think the question was more broadly, what are the other environmental impacts of doing that much in quick succession? But again, I don't have a much better answer than that.
Well, the threshold for sewer hookups, you know, or requiring hookups is something like 50 houses or some kind of proximity to a sewer system that's already in existence, which we don't have. So I also wondered, does Broughton have a sewer? Because they're a little more, they have a bigger dense, densely populated area.
Anybody know? I don't know. I'm gonna assume that the rural area is, is on septic like the rest of us, but that possibly the Village of Broughton has, has public, I think they may have public water. I am not positive. Other thoughts from anybody? Because I do have a proposal, and actually, I need some, actually, I need some information from, from Michelle. And if not Michelle, some, some, you know, additional commentary, but any else from the town board who's here. In terms of lot line adjustments, so this bit, you know, I understand, board keeps working on this, so we're assured and a moving target. So you guys made some decisions about lot line adjustments, and you made, I think, had some discussions about what to do about public hearings for minor subdivisions. So update all of us. Michelle?
I don't, I don't think we've made any decisions. Have we, Tim?
Michelle, can I, can I just jump in in a minute regarding Broughton, just to close that? Broughton does indeed have a public water system, sewer system. Sewer system was established in 1963, and it appears though, system serves 2,300 residents with 765 service. Yes.
Not decision, but you guys are talking about options? Where, where, where do things stand right now? Do we think this, this law is going?
Well, I'll just say, and then Tim can jump in, because I will, I will say I'm a little distracted tonight. Because Barb can relate to this, my daughter's having a baby. Probably, possibly as we speak, so I'm a little, you know, but the last thing, what?
What are you doing here?
I'm leaving tomorrow. Yeah, I just found out today, so that's why I'm, I found out this afternoon, three hours ago or something, so that's why. I'm making plans. I have to take my dog someplace and everything. Anyway. My, my recollection is, Mark sent an email saying, I think the recommendation is to pop, accept Nan's recommendations. I thought Guy said he didn't like having things be exempt. But the crucial thing was Mark was gonna send a summary, I think, of Nan's comments, and we haven't gotten that yet.
Nan responded to questions we raised. Is that what you're talking about, or is there some other things that Nan's commenting on for you guys?
No, I, I think she's already done that, and Guy's already commented. But Mark was gonna send a summary, and I don't think he sent a summary yet, so I've kind of, you know.
For us.
Just the point of information is the review board.
They have, they did. So, yeah, so see if this fits with what you guys, you know, I understand that based in part on the review board's feedback, that lot line adjustments were probably going to not be reviewed by the review board, but would instead be handled administratively by the code enforcement officer. So that's a change from the draft that we saw. And Nan sort of hinted at this or suggested this in one of her answers, or anyway, but I think you guys are contemplating giving the review board the authority to override state law and not require a public hearing for a minor subdivision if they chose to not require it. Okay, because that's, oh, I thought you guys had discussed that, okay.
Did we? Well, not in a meeting, I don't, maybe on email, I think.
All right, good, 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 okay, because there's a comment from Nan, so saying that maybe you, okay, so. So it's hard to hear Tim, because of where the microphones are, but he was saying that, that the town board has not really discussed concretely having, giving the authority to waive that requirement, and in particular, the zoning commission chose not to overrule state law in several areas. And so, you know, likely the town board will think very hard about whether or not they, they wanted that. So I forgot this in my little overview. So, for example, the town of Dryden, in their subdivision law, is quite a bit slimmer than ours, but the reason for that is that it says, and procedures shall be as outlined in, outlined in Town Law 267, which is a state law, which basically is all the procedures that we have thrown into our law. I think they're very similar, I didn't go line by line. But it is indeed in the state authorizing legislation, Town Law, that a minor subdivision has a public hearing, they only have one plat, and there's a public hearing on that plat. And a major subdivision has two public hearings, one on the preliminary plat, one on the final plat. And I don't know exactly what our law says about, about that, but any rate. So while there is a clause in the subdivision law that says the reviewer may waive any requirement, part of the issue is, but, but this public hearing requirement also exists in state law. And so we probably would need to authorize the town board explicitly to override state law if they want to not have that hearing. All right, well, then here's a suggestion from me, that we can maybe help focus discussion, and then decide whether we have enough to go on today or, or not, and where is it, there it is. And you guys may hate this, that's quite all right. Because in case you couldn't tell, I'm quite concerned with requiring everyone who wants to just sell one piece of property off their parcel to, like, go through the review board. Now, it's probably possible, as long as reviewer does things efficiently and calmly and everything, and I'm just concerned partly with the burden on the town, on, on the review board, the burden on the town residents, but also sort of just the feeling, like, you know, I gotta go through all this paperwork for everything, and if, if there's no real benefit from all that review, that's what we keep trying to ask, is what's the benefit of having the review board review the fact that I want to sell? And if if there's no real benefit from all that review, I'm that's what we keep trying to ask is what's the benefit of having the review board review the fact that I want to sell? That 10 acres over there. There may be some. But no one's giving me a good answer to that question, so I'm unconvinced. That's me. But here's my suggestion is that we follow to some extent the pattern of Groton and Enfield. And allow either one or perhaps two lots to be divided off. Um, at a level that is reviewed by the code enforcement officer and not the review board. And so I've written the following as sort of guidance for how that might go. It's not necessarily formal language, but an exempt subdivision is one that doesn't require the approval of the review board. And again, I apologize. I've been very scattered this last month. This is something that should have been gone out in writing so everyone would have it. I've handed two copies out here for Michelle and Will. You don't have a written copy, so I'm going to read, read it. And I do apologize for not getting you a copy, but I literally wrote this three hours ago. Um, but I've been thinking about it for three weeks. Um, so the intent is that an exempt subdivision would be reviewed by the code enforcement officer. To make sure that the following were all true. That indeed creates, and here's a decision, does it create two or maybe at most three? That's that's something for us to discuss parcels from one originating parcel. There must not be anything that winds up requiring seeker. You know, no special features along the lines of what Guy suggested. You know, I don't necessarily know what all of those are, but you know, if if there's nothing that would require seeker. That is no particular special feature, like it's not a national historic monument or something else. And doesn't require any other agency approval. That is, it doesn't, there's no infrastructure that has to be reviewed or approved by the town board. Um, and typically that's either a public road or a stormwater facilities. Uh, that the splitting doesn't render any existing building noncompliant with the zoning district. And and this is the the um, uh, what do you call it? The not bifurcation, but you know, the the separating things out. It does not create in a three-year span. Uh, five par- five parcels from an originating parcel. So that's similar to what's in our existing subdivision law and similar to what's in the public health law that Guy referenced in his note. And there's another decision there. The public health law defines a parcel as five acres or less. That's a residential lot. Um, I didn't do that here because I didn't know if we wanted to go that extra rig and roll. Might just say you can't make five lots in three years. So this, that's my proposal to be shot down or whatever, um, you know, but. I just feel that would be an escape valve and would not. After that, I'm happy with anything above that requiring a public hearing. So that would not require the town board to authorize the review board to to uh, go over town state law. Michelle.
Well, so my question is, um, who who decides if something meets all these requirements?
So it's reviewed by the code enforcement officer. So the boss comes in, they have to give, they have to give a a a a something like a plat, certainly a survey. That is enough to convince the code enforcement officer that they indeed meet these things. So yeah, the code enforcement officer is the gatekeeper to review it, make sure it's fine. Um, and then if it doesn't meet those, push it onto the review board. If it does, he may still require something to be changed. He might say, well, you got to move that building envelope a little bit. Right? I mean, I think there's some role of that. I could be wrong about that. Maybe that has to be review board function. But that it would be looked at by the code enforcement officer.
Wouldn't even on the proposed law right now, wouldn't CEO still be the first one to get anything?
Yeah.
Okay, but but it has to be looked at. It would have to be approved by the, the difference is the approval has to be by the review board in the way the law is currently written. I'm moving that approval in this restricted set of conditions to the code enforcement officer.
Yeah, off the top of my head, that. Off the top of my head, I'm thinking along those lines also. And it's reinforced by the fact that um, we wouldn't be. Um, I'm not sure what's a good way to put this, but we wouldn't be imposing restrictions. That the zoning commission had a chance to. Um, impose in that there were several situations where. Development, if you want to call all residential building development, um, where it's exempt. From review board review. It's right in the uh, zoning laws, so. That's why I keep asking, you know, well, what is the environmental concern? Because we've covered the health and the health part in already. And by the way, the the state health, state health department. Defines a subdivision on the five, five houses and five acre acres within the last. Three years. They call it the five, five, three rule that you referenced. And that's across the state, it's it's not just for more. Um, densely populated areas is cross state.
I I I know Barb wanted to say, but as a quick add on to that, I mean, I think, for example, that. Um, we don't have anything, like say someone wanted to build four houses. There's nothing um, about water supply that I think would affect, that would be imposed on someone building. Four houses unless we put it in the subdivision law. So that's one of the, you know, the public, the the public, the Tompkins County Health Department looks at is there, you know, safe sewage disposal or set up. But I don't think they would necessarily look at would building those four houses impact the water supply of neighboring properties? I could be wrong about that, but I think that that's to answer your partial answer to your question, that that's one of the environmental impacts that. By having subdivision review could happen that currently wouldn't happen. Otherwise.
Okay, well, that's certainly worth tracking down.
Okay, Barb, you were gonna say something earlier.
Uh, yeah, just as I'm looking at the New York State documents, it appears that if something is called a subdivision. Um, it it needs review or it needs to go through this process. So I think we have to have language not calling it exempt subdivision. We have to name it something else.
Yeah, I will leave that to, I I good point, though, again, that's why I was trying to take what Guy said. He said, just call it subdivision, basically in his notes. He says, you can call it land division subdivision. It's all just confusing. That's the way I took what he wrote, but I will leave that to, I think, Guy and the town board. I think it's a good point. Because I kept trying to say, oh, we should call thing a land division rather than a subdivision. And basically in what he wrote back, he said, bah.
Well, you take care of it in the definition. Our definition of subdivision doesn't have to be the same as the state's. Definition of subdivision, so when they say all subdivisions must meet these requirements. They mean all subdivisions under their definition, which allows. For what we wanted to do. I mean, what we suggested previously, you can have that disconnect. In fact, it exists already.
Adam, you were gonna say something? Uh, yes, I was saying, um. Maybe to. Make it a little less cumbersome would be still for the CEO to approve it, but still like a quick look or a quick review from the review board. Unless that was already the idea. Not like an approval, but more like to make sure that he didn't overstep any.
Yeah, um. Yeah, no, I mean, not an unreasonable suggestion. I I I'm having, I was trying, I was trying to keep things smooth and efficient, but I take your point. Which is that, you know, you're putting trust in the hands of the CEO. Um, now having talked to, again, I've talked to towns that had real planning people as opposed to, you know, I don't know. Uh, and and they all were real happy to do stuff and said, yeah, they give us more to do, you know, we should approve this stuff and. You know, because we're the basically the pros and we have the experience and we know a lot of this, and so we can handle it more efficiently. I don't know. How do you feel about that question?
I mean, I I think that's a question for the town, what the experience has been and what the what the town leadership. Expect the experience going forward to be with regard to the code enforcement officer. Um, you know, treating their buddies well and and other people not well. And so, you know, throughout the um, the state document, it does, it does, you know, have. Uh, you know, references to to the notion that a review board can still review things. Even though it's not, you know, required subdivision review, they can still review it as giving some oversight. To the to the code enforcement officer. Um, so. You know, again, I don't know town politics and I don't know the qualifications of the current person nor future people who might hold that position, but. Um, you know, there have been accusations um, of town residents. That so and so was treating, you know, X person specially because they're their friend. And so to the extent that you have to have the review board or even a subdivision, either review board. Looking over the code enforcement officer's shoulder is not.
Or even a chair. Yeah, giving be the the chair, like I said, just some of the sort of double check. So that the two of them could be in cahoots, but hopefully you cut the odds or something. Okay, so um, we'll add, again, at this point, we're just giving advice. So, um, but I'm going to say that we advise there be some oversight. Of the CEO action, uh, if we quote that. Um, well, I did want to say one thing in terms of subdivision and definition. So what what Guy pointed out is that, you know, various town laws. Um, set up something as a subdivision, so they all in some ways have their own definition. So again, by definition, if there's a parcel and a public road gets built through it. So that parcel is subdivided into two pieces, that's called a subdivision and certain rules apply to it. Or again, the public health law, the five, five, three rule, doesn't care what the town calls a subdivision. If it meets that definition, it's a subdivision and public health law applies. So that's was my education from in in Guy's answer is that. And you say there's various other things that that can turn something into a subdivision, uh, whether town calls it one or not. And various other town laws apply. Or, you know, state town, town law, state law, town law applies. Um. Okay, so uh, one fundamental question is whether someone should simply be able to, you know, take something and divide into two pieces. Or into three pieces before qualifying as a minor subdivision. If if we're going to go this, recommend an alternate route like this.
What's proposed right now?
It's any any division whatsoever is a minor subdivision. And up to up to five, five and above is a major subdivision. Uh, there are more requirements. The major subdivision has two different, you know, plats and, you know, just a bit more submissions and stuff like that.
If we do three, that's only a minor, it would only be four.
Right. Yep. And what I will tell you is from looking at the splits that happened in town, I know that. A vast majority, like ninety percent are either two or three. But I can't tell you off the top of my head is how many are two versus three. It's more twos than threes. Um, threes aren't rare, but they are less common than just taking one, one part.
Now, if we if we chose only two, but someone still split another one in a three-year span. I see that one, that's the bottom part of your thing here is.
Yes.
Does not create in any three-year span, five parcels. So you could still do it again, even if we set it two.
Right.
You can do it again.
Yeah.
Log it in over five.
Right.
And still not trigger a review board.
Right.
And I would recommend only a two, because then someone could still do that later and it leaves it so someone can't quickly do a three. I mean, not that that makes too much of a difference, but it seems like then a small, a minor subdivision is. Just four.
Yeah, my my tendency, if we did that, would to say that a minor division is four or five and a major is above five. But, you know, and I don't mind, again, I'm not really pushing one direction to the other on this. I am agnostic. But yes, I agree. Otherwise saying, well, a minor subdivision is just four, it seems kind of silly, so at least do it four or five.
And can all of that would be within a three-year period?
Well, so the the minor to major already has a look back period. So so we're creating a, this is a long Will's suggestion of a micro subdivision, right? That's what I'm sort of, it's sometimes trying to create something that has a lighter level of review. That covers really the benign things that most people in town are trying to do, trying to catch the non benign things by the things they violate. So yes, the exempt thing can't create more than five lots in three years. But I didn't, I didn't limit the size of the lots. Which is a difference from our current subdivision.
But I.
Glad, Will.
I hope I'm not taking up more than my share of airtime here, but um, I mean. It, if water supply is a major um, consideration. I mean, we are a very watery town, um, and uh, but it's, you know, a lot of it's a closed system, right? Which makes a difference. Um, you you could make the density. The possible uh, density, um. Uh, criterion just as easily as making the number of. Um, buildings, a criteria or a number of splits. But criterion, you know, we sort of addressed that with the um, average. Um, we're still doing average uh, number of acres, right?
Right.
Yeah, and it's meant to accommodate the requirements from the health department as being sufficient. And if it turns out they're really not addressing water quality, then. You you know, you can make the density requirement. It's not that hard to do. Because it would be a a simple calculation, right?
I guess I wouldn't know what to calculate, but maybe maybe you mean, you know, what what to base the calculation on. Um, you know, you know, I think that if there if there were review process, pump tests and that sort of stuff is what would take place. Uh, whereas ahead of time, I wouldn't know how to specify that, but maybe you have a thought, Will.
I could look in into it, um, you know. The the information will be available. Um, it sounds like Danby has had some problems in the past. I think it was a big discussion there where people were building and it was affecting their neighbors' water supply. Um, you know. I'd be happy to check around and also see what I can find online.
Okay.
Through people who deal with water issues.
Okay, well, here's what I'm going to say is, I mean, I I hear you. Um, I threw that out. As I know, water supply being one issue that does come up. But I'm not going to say it's the only reason for why there's these limits of the number of lots. I don't want to send you like on a on a on a long trek that winds up being a minor point that doesn't really carry the day in one way or other, so. You know, again, I I feel that there's one thing and and not necessarily determinative uh, factor in these things. Um, I also know that the town board would like to get this out for public hearing. And um, I I want it to be a good law, so that's why I'm been putting my foot down a bit to make sure we get a chance to really look at it and dig into this. So that's not enough reason to say, well, shouldn't do that. Um, but again, I feel like it might be one little piece of the puzzle and and maybe I I I raise its importance too much.
I like your, your exempt subdivision idea. I think, I think it would definitely make things easier for people doing a small, like just about a small piece of property off of there.
And at a level of two, I think is where you were.
Of course, I mean, the only reason why I think that two is just because I think that would make the four so weird. But I I understand changing maybe those upper ones too, but. Um, I don't have a problem with two at most three. It just, you'd have to re kind of redefine the other two.
Barb, your thoughts? I mean, I've heard from Will, heard from again, but.
I I I would be more in favor of the two, and I I'm also just looking at the draft law that we had. And the major subdivision that talked about a five-year look back period. That's where I'm a little bit confused, but a three-year look back period versus.
Uh, um, because I was echoing public health law one, 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 something or other, one, one, five. That is from Guy. Yeah, well, he has, he referenced that. I mean, they say, he said that, and and that's. Yeah, well, he has, he referenced that, I mean, they say, he said that, and then that's what's in our current subdivision law. Has that three year span for that same reason, it was carefully crafted to not trigger public health law one, one, five. Um, so yeah, but Nan was to create a five year look back period, so we could use a different number one.
So maybe that's what the revision refers to. Just. Yeah, I guess I guess I'm a little bit concerned about, um. You know, a three year look back doesn't seem to me to be that great, a span of time for maybe things exist, so. Good, I think I'd be more in favor of applying the five year look back period.
So kind of seeing for all the subdivisions, even exempt ones.
Right. Just that.
All right, uh, Will, what do you think about the duration of look back period? Uh, Barb was proposing um recommending a a five year span, uh, rather than the three year that I had written in. Yeah, oh, yeah, we're not hearing you right now, Will, sorry.
Yeah, uh, thanks, pardon me for being thick about this, but are you thinking, Barb, that if you look back farther, then there's. Uh, less chance for, shall we say, shenanigans?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that that's that's fine. Uh, you know, uh, I'm not, I don't have a strong feeling about that. Um, but I do know things always move small, more slowly than you think. They will also, so even that could be a good reason to go further back.
Okay, how do you feel about that? I think it makes more sense to keep it more uniform across everything, definitely makes things simpler to understand.
Okay, all right, I'm I'm with whatever, so that's fine. All right, so I think we're things standard now, so I'm gonna say this, and if you guys don't agree, that's fine. Is that our recommendation to the town board would be that we indeed create uh an exempt class of something, which maybe is called a subdivision, maybe something else. Whatever the legal experts say, that means that would allow someone to divide a parcel into two pieces, but no more. As long as it met these other requirements about not being seeker and public, you know, dedication or render things not conforming. Uh, and didn't create more than uh five parcels over a five year span. Uh, is that where we're at? Okay. Okay, all right, so.
Can I uh make one just tiny, small comment about that?
Absolutely.
I did come across a piece um. In the at the state level where they 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 say that. Um, if if somebody subdivides through a will. Um. It it does circumvent the restriction. As long as. It wasn't done for the purpose of circumventing restriction. And, you know, I worked with uh. Electric power regulation for a lot of years, and I found that as soon as you made a regulation. People got really busy uh figuring out how they were going to get around it because their goals were different than. Our goals and um, I I just bring that up as, I don't, I don't know if there's an issue in our town or not. Um, I suspect not, but I just I mention it just so that it it'll probably come up, somebody is gonna understand that that's. Um, one of the regulation pieces of the regulation that already exists.
Uh, Will, I will share that that frequently during our zoning commission discussions, when I was talking with Nan, she would say. You will be surprised how clever people will be to try to get around and the things they will claim are a home business, for example, you know, she, so. Yeah, I think you're you're spot on there, as soon as you write something saying, as long as you weren't intending to do that, that's okay, uh, I get pretty skeptical. But. Okay, so I'm going to write this up better and send along the town board as a recommendation along with. Are we in agreement that we are approving of the removal of lot line adjustment, leaving that in the hands of the CEO? Or we recommend the town board put that back in the hands of the review board?
Um, I I'm, I I'll come back to the discussion a few minutes ago about having some oversight, um. That I I guess I'm I'm just cautious about. Concerns haven't been raised by town residents in the past that favors were granted to certain people and not to others. Um, and when whether those claims are true, I have I have no idea, but the perceptions at least are out there. And so, um, you know, unless it's viewed as being a really unworkable burden. It it seems to me wise to err on the on the side of. The code enforcement officer having somebody else who is um. Giving some review to those kinds of decisions, and so, you know, it could be that the chair. Of the review board or somebody on the review board who is designated by the chair to have that role, um. You know, more eyes is better than one set.
It would be even better if it was a rotating job of review board members, because then we could avoid the collusion. Yeah, okay. That's cool, yeah. Okay. Uh, Will, how do you feel about lot line adjustments?
Um. I'm al- I'm okay with that as an exemption in, I I feel a little sheepish saying this, but um. When I was rushing, at the point where I was rushing through some of what I wanted to look at, I thought I came across something. That said lot line adjustments for. Under certain pieces of state regulation. Are considered uh subdivisions that are. Uh, that require secret. Um, and so. I guess what I'd wanna say is I'm okay, I I'm definitely okay with lot line adjustments. Um, not being considered a subdivision, but if I come across the piece. That got stuck in my head, I'd like to just, as, you know, send it out to you guys, um, but it would be within the next week.
Okay.
Before the town board meets.
Okay.
But it looks.
But they're meeting Thursday, I guess, but.
Oh, it's it's not July yet.
Yeah, they're actually having another meeting soon, but I.
No, it's our second meeting of June, it's our second.
My my understanding is the car is the other way around, Will, that lot line adjustments are specifically carved out away from the subdivision and secret process, but.
Yeah, that makes sense, but. So, oh, okay, I will trust then that I just read it wrong while I was in a rush, I don't I don't have a problem. Thinking that I just got that one mixed up.
Okay, and Adam, you're you're full with, yeah, okay. All right, uh, as far as I'm concerned, we are done with our review of the subdivision law, but does anybody else have another issue they want to bring up related to the subdivision law to discuss? Okay. All right, great, and then we are scheduled to meet next week, um, next Wednesday would be our regularly scheduled meeting. Um, I, at this point, have no idea if I'm in town. That doesn't actually. Yeah, does not matter one direction or the other, because you guys can can meet, um. The agenda would probably be until we hear from the town board more specifically, um, to. Look at some of these other town laws that the um. Were flagged, specifically the mobile home park law, the adult and the adult use law. Uh, probably you might want to look in the road classification law, but anyway, that would probably be the next topic, and I again, depending. Advice from from the um town board. If you didn't notice on the agenda, the town board's about to hear from some group that is like the Coalition Against Big Trucks, I think CABT is their their acronym. Um, and I did not look in detail, but I um, I, they are. Wanting to make sure that exemptions aren't given for big trucks on our roads, something like that, I don't know.
You mean like truck details on town road?
I'm assuming so, I don't really know the details. Uh, and I bring this up to say that I know Mark had mentioned that someone had, you know, was concerned about the impact logging trucks had had. So it might well be that that one of the first tasks will be given is to uh come up with a road use law. Um, and uh, so that's likely to be an assignment, but I can't predict, you know, for sure.
It'd be interesting with uh almost state forests we have around here.
Right, yeah, yeah, well, that's the thing, and so, so it's not, you can't do it, but it has to be. Either you can you can restrict seasons when the roads get less damaged, or you have to get some sort of compensation, you know, anyway. I did work on a on a committee that worked at that, and it gets complicated when you try to do it right, so I if we go that way, I suggest we do it almost right rather than right. Uh, because.
You might get mad at us.
Yeah.
They do a lot of logging up in those forests.
Well, they do, you know, but if you just make them drag the logs out in the winter, that's gonna save a lot on the roads, but. Anyway, that's what I can tell you, that's what I remember from ten years ago. So, uh, at any rate, um, for now, let's keep, I mean, sorry, let's, we'll keep the regular scheduled meeting next week. If I'm here, I'm here, if I'm not here. Um, I'm gonna nominate Barb to chair in my absence, are you in town next week?
I should be.
Okay, um, and Will, do you know if you'll be back in town?
I really hope so.
Okay, well, good luck, fingers crossed.
Yeah, uh, I'm sorry, I'm uh not as dependable as I'd like to be.
Oh, and and if I'm away, if there's a chance I could join by Zoom, but it's also a chance I couldn't, so we'll see. Uh, but let's hold that meeting schedule um for now, and if there's some reason why it can't work, because like two of us can't make it, then it's silly for the two of you to meet. Um, and so we'll we'll confirm that, but that's from Wednesday and next week.
Well, Michelle, you're welcome to join me if I'm still stuck here.
Yes. Just down. We can meet halfway, we can meet halfway in Manhattan someplace.
Yeah, well, you'll 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 have. There might be an infant on your shoulder or something, you know.
Oh, I I could go down and visit you, that would be interesting, but what is it, it's like two hours between Bronx and Queens.
No, it's like, well, depends, are you going mass transit or by car?
Well, I'm taking the bus down tomorrow, but.
Oh, that's nice, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm gonna say.
For the July meeting, July twenty fourth.
Yeah.
I know I will not be able to um attend that one, um.
Uh, not at all or just not in person?
Not at all.
Okay. All right, great, uh, and, you know, as soon as you can, just send me whatever notes you scroll down and I'll put minutes out. All right, well, thank you everyone.
Nice, nice notes, and Bill, thank you for all the running around you did. Running around you did uh via email and the internet research and talking to people. Thank you.
Just my job, just doing my job. But it helps you can compensate, by the way, I'm the, you know, chair of the planning board, I sound so official and powerful.
It is.
We'll bring you a crown, we'll bring you.
Yeah, okay, that'd be good. All right, thanks so much.
Good night, then, oh.
Are are you, are you?